I'd like to start the Town of Atherton's March 19th City Council meeting at seven o'clock, and I'd like to call it Legislegions.
Legislegians, who live in the United States of America, and to hear the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll far forward.
Councilmember Whitmer?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Vice Mayor Biggoli?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
We have no presentations. Correct, George. Correct. So we'll move on to public comments. Any public comments or any item that is not on the agenda?
I'm Walter Slick, number 227 in Catalpa. Good evening, Mayor Lee, and fellow council members. I want to express, for the vast majority of residents in Atherton, our appreciation for the tireless devotion of Jim Dobie. He did his best in a non-flamboyant way to give Atherton a council which carefully looked at issues and analyzed all viewpoints. He is a most gentle and kind man. He uniformly sought to make our community work efficiently. He worked hard to reach out to all viewpoints in Atherton. We will miss his steady hand reviewing and deciding issues. We wish him well, and then he conquers the health issues which forced him to resign. Please, Jim, take the time to smell the roses. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. We all agree.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I am William Ridley, I live at 151 Laurel Street. This is your not-so-monthly briefing on the status of the High-Speed Rail project. As you may remember, there are two parts to the trial called TOS Facuta and Kings County versus High-Speed Rail, otherwise known as a Proposition 1 A suit. Part one was adjudicated last May 31st. Judge Michael Kenny of the Superior Court issued his ruling on the 16th of March. Their ruling said that the authority had, in his own words, "disabused its power" by saying it had all of the money to run the 300 miles from Merced, California to Silmar, San Fernando, when it only had $6 billion of the $31.5 billion that they said that they needed. Judge Kenny also said that they disabused their power when they certified that they had all of the environmental material prepared and cleared legally, when they had 28 of the 300 miles clarified. The governor at that time dismissed that as inconsequential, that's a quote. Unfortunately for the governor, on January 24th of this year, he called that same decision, or the one that actually came on November 25th, which was called the remedies decision, as catastrophic to the power. Inconsequential, catastrophic, same decision. He then required, under his authority, the Supreme Court of the State of California to not only issue a stay, meaning overrule Judge Kenny's decision, but to give him a decision on their decision by the 1st of March of this year. The Supreme Court, reminding the governor that he actually did go to law school, said, "Mr. Governor, we have a process. It goes like this. If you don't like the Superior Court decision, you go to the appellate court. If you don't like the appellate court, you come to us." And incidentally, you don't tell the judicial system of California when they will give you a decision. They decide that. Don't you remember? We have a separation of powers in this country. So the decision went back to the appellate court that has indeed decided to review the decisions of Judge Michael Kenny of the Superior Court. Parenthetically, that's fine with us, who are on, I think, your side of that decision, because it will give weight to the decision when three more judges decide the same thing. How will the Attorney General of the State of California argue that they have the other $25 billion, and they somehow came up magically with the other 272 miles of environmental clarances? The judge required, the judge, sorry, excuse me, the appellate court required the lawyers to resubmit the briefs on this part, part one of that two-part trial. Those briefs we submitted, that is, as plaintiffs, or in this case defendants, because we are defending from their petition, gets a little wrangle. And those briefs went in on Monday. We were also joined by the Pacific Legal Foundation and the Howard John August Talkspapers Association in filing of those briefs. We expect, then, that the Attorney General will file their brief within 10 days. The Attorney General has never, let me reiterate something, never contested the decisions of Judge Michael Kenny of August 16th and November 25th. They only contested the right of the judiciary to hear and to decide on that issue. That was in a dramatic courtroom issue on May 30th last year, in which the Attorney General of the state argued that the judicial system had no right, no reason, nor any legal foundation, to be able to review this case, to which Judge Michael Kenny leaned forward because they, excuse me, because they, the Attorney General, and the California High-Speed Rail Authority, had in fact met all requirements set up by the legislature. Of course, ignoring Article 16 of the California Constitution, which says that any proposition, ballot proposition, overrules anything done by the legislature, and duh, that's why we have ballot propositions, because we had a crooked legislature. Judge Michael Kenny had a very dramatic movement on May 31st of last year, leaned forward, looked at the Attorney General representative, and said, "Well, madam, why did you put it on the ballot, if you have?" Your honor, that was to inform the voters. That did not cut much, as you may see. So we're in the position right now, which we would expect, that the appellate court will set a trial date within maybe a month or six weeks, and we will go back, argue to the same issues that we did before, and that, given the brilliance of the lawyer that you know well, Stuart Flashman, he has been representing the town in Mellow Park, brilliant as he was, he put the whole list, when he opened his arguments on May 31st of last year, he put the entire list of precedents on the front page. He started by the precedents. He knew they would appeal, therefore he put them up on page one, two, and three of his brief, and in his verbal, in his oral arguments, so that the appellate court, when they go to make that decision, don't really have to read past page three to figure out that there is precedent already set for that decision. That is part one. Part two, we know, is a part of TOS Facuta in Kings County versus the California High-Speed Rail Authority, that the government of the State of California has feared and feared deeply. That is very simple. We can show that here, on my right hand, it is my right, yes, on my right hand, is what the California voters were promised in the ballot issue of November 2008. And on my left hand, we can show what the High-Speed Rail Authority proposes to do with that $9 billion today. There is no, let me reiterate, no resemblance between the two. We know the government does not want to have that, because that is wonderful publicity for the opposition, because we will go very slowly, over a week or 10 days, showing point by point how they lied to the voters to get their votes, and how they did a bait-and-switch afterwards. So, on December 8th of last year, they had what's called a case management conference, which is supposed to be a fairly informal meeting between the judge, the plaintiffs, and the defendants. The Attorney General's office said, "No, we will not put up with this. We must have a decision on whether we can go forward with part two or not," which meant that we had to argue once again the legalities of going forward on part two, which briefs have been submitted. Two weeks ago today, excuse me, two weeks ago yesterday, the Judge Michael Kenny of the Superior Court ruled that, yes, there was legal grounds to go forward with part two. How could he have otherwise? And the day after, our friends at the High-Speed Rail Authority submitted a petition to the state appellate court, not the Supreme Court this time, to stay that order and to overturn it. So the wheels of justice grind very slowly. They are going to try to stall, dump, whatever they can do to keep this out of court, because it is going to be an enormous embarrassment to them. Any questions? At the point, just to give a public briefing, the decision last year blocked the California High-Speed Rail Authority's access to, let's call it, it's still 8.2 billion, sorry, B, 8.2 billion dollars, a combination of federal, but lesser, call it, excuse me, $3 billion of state money to acquire properties, businesses, and to build. They still have the federal money, right? So that's what they're spending now. They can spend some of that remaining part that you voted for in 2008 on planning, engineering, and design. We have no hold over that. There was never any statutory requirement that had to prove certain things. So they are spending money to plan, build, and design, just spending in the neighborhood, but tell me, the federal money and the state money, something in the neighborhood of a million dollars a day at this point, of your money, incidentally. And that federal money is now under question. The Congress, the rail committee, the subcommittee of the Congress has asked the GAO to investigate this. I was back in Washington in November and asked the internal judicial review, the Office of the Inspector General, to review why the federal road administration is still giving money to what is an illegal project. They couldn't have cared less. It's other people's money. They don't care about that. But now, I think, the federal government is starting to wake up that they have not only a loser, perhaps even fraudulent, activity on the part of the High-Speed Rail Authority. But they still do. So when you see the headlines, that they are very good at spinning, that the project is up and running, I think the appropriate acronym is BS for all of that. Even the contractor, Tudor Perini, that won the contract to build the first 29 miles, Ron Tudor, who is not known for his subtlety, said something to the effect of, "We can't get started until this toll in September, October this year." So the reality is, they are blocked from state money. They really have no way to spend federal money, even to purchase the 350-odd parcels that they need to build the 29 miles. As of a week or so ago, they had purchased actually nine of those 350. But, you know, it's just keep spending, because it's other people's money. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Any other public comments? That, any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, let's close that. Let's go ahead and move on to the report out of close session.
Mr. Mayor, nothing to report.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number six. City managers, report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you got before you the city manager's report. I'm not going to go through it in detail. One thing I would like to highlight, though, is tonight is kind of a kickoff of major issues before the Town of Atherton related to budget and money. The first tonight is the CCAC master plan, the Civic Center master plan. On April 2nd at 4:00 p.m. on the study session, the council will be, check-ins on the bike ped master plan and the park master plan. On May 7th at 4:00 p.m. at the study session will be the drainage master plan, and then the revenue enhancements presentation, part two. On May 21st at 7:00 p.m. at the regular meeting will be the budget kickoff for the general fund. And on June 4th at 4:00 p.m. will be part two of that with capital projects, special funds, as well as a discussion of the parcel tax. And on June 18th at 7:00 p.m. regular meeting will be a discussion of adoption of the budget and the actual setting of the parcel tax for this fiscal year. That concludes my report.
Any questions for George? Seeing none, let's go ahead and close that. We're going to go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull any item that is on the consent calendar, number eight through 18? Seeing none, going back to council. Any items that any councilman would like to pull?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on item 16, just to make sure everybody understands what the situation is on the bike ped. And also discuss item 13, so pull 13, comment on 16.
Thank you very much. I'm Mr. Whitmer. Councilmember.
I think I had on my question.
Perfect. Thank you. That's a nice thing to do. Vice Mayor Biggoli?
No.
None. Bill, would you like to go ahead and ask your, or make your comment related to 16?
Sure. 16 is to fund the development of some grant requests. There's a quarter of a billion dollars of grant money out there for bike and pedestrian improvements in towns across the state that's available every other year. And when we met to go over the bike ped master plan a week ago, it was indicated that we had to get our, if we're going to ask for any of that money, we need to get it in quickly. So we've asked for a nominal amount, so that they could assist the town in putting something together. It should be a multi-jurisdictional opportunity, so I've contacted also Supervisor Slocum, who not only said he'd be more than willing to sign, but said that he would be interested also in pursuing, also funding some of it. So we would hope that the town would liaise with the county to follow up on that. But, so, the $5,000 is a nominal amount, but the $5,000 could be lessened, or we could do a better proposal, lessen the county money. So your support is approved.
Susan Church, please.
Bill, what amount will the grant be for in your request?
Well, we're going to identify a number of projects. You have to identify the projects. So we're looking at safe routes to schools, as well as a couple of the major corridors.
ECR, is the ECR a part of that?
Well, as we discussed yesterday, the ECR is not necessarily in our jurisdiction. Middlefield is, Selby Lane would be, but we did have quite a discussion on that. Valerie Gardner and myself were pretty focused on the fact that we want to look at areas where we've had safety issues and high incidence of safety issues, and we think that, and there's throughput from other towns. So we haven't come up with the final plan, but we should review that with the council when we do.
Any other questions for Bill?
Yeah, so is the idea that we would apply for possibly more than one grant out of that money?
Well, we would make a grant request with multiple projects.
And the county would?
The county will participate in it, because they indicated, the people from Alta indicated that if, in fact, you did something just within your town, especially a town with the influence of Atherton, the chances of getting something were small. But if we tied something through that would be more of a regional type of approach, and would help people of different economic backgrounds that would have a higher chance of winning.
Now, I was able to attend the transportation meeting. They did a presentation. It was very well. And searching for grant funds is obviously, yeah, absolutely. So, okay. And I apologize, I have a typo on my front page of my agenda. The consent items are actually number eight through 16, not 18, as I originally said. So just please note, any member of the public that would like to pull an item eight through 16. Seeing none. Sorry, councilmembers, just to stand corrected, it's not 18 and 16. So can I get a motion to approve all items, with the exception of item number 13, which is pulled, and we'll deal with that later?
So move. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Perfect, thank you. Let's go ahead and move on. We're going to be moving on to the public hearing, part of this hearing, which is items number 17 through 18. Item number 17, public hearing on the recommendation of the increase in green waste in the Town of Atherton rates.
Mr. Mayor, before Robert gets started on the report, just one administrative change that the city clerk provided you with an updated copy of the ordinance. We wanted to make sure we included all the current rates in there, but we inadvertently left off the some commercial rates for the four yards, six yard, and eight yard. The ordinance is updated to include those rates. We might want to come back at some point in the future and modify those rates via the 218 process. But the only changes tonight are the green waste rates, which Robert will do this evening once you open the public hearing.
Perfect. Let's go ahead and do that. Robert?
Good evening, Mayor and city council, members of the public. Today before you is conducting a public hearing regarding a proposed increase in the green waste rates for the town. Tabulate any protest received, and if appropriate, adopt ordinance 602, increasing the collection services for green waste rates. On January 15th, 2014, the council revisited the solid waste committee's analysis and discussions regarding the Town of Atherton's refuse rates. After reviewing data submitted by SDWM, the committee recommended that the council address the cost alignment for the green waste rates. Committee's recommendations suggested that the cost model for green cart collection move closer to a true cost recovery. Following the presentation in January, staff was directed to issue a notice of public hearing pursuant to the requirements of Proposition 218. As to the requirements of Proposition 218, staff mailed out notices to the proposed green rate increases to all refuse service customers and parcels in the Town of Atherton. The notice described to the service customer the procedures on how to file a protest hearing regarding the rates. Proposition 218 requires notice be issued 45 days prior to the hearing. As of this hearing, the town has complied with the requirement of issuing the notice for 45 days. An attached is a copy of that notice that went out. As part of Prop 218, the proposition provides that if there is no majority protest, then the rate increase can be imposed by an ordinance approved by a two-thirds vote of the members of the council. As of the writing of this report, and as of today, we've only received one protest regarding the increase in the rates. The current town rate structure allows for refuse pickup, which includes two green waste carts. The town rate structure also allows for additional green waste carts above the two carts. So here before you today is the recommendation by the committee to increase the rates for carts three and four, and carts five and above. Regarding that, the cost for the green, for the carts is approximately $19 per cart per month. And so this is the recommendation from the committee is to get closer to a true cost recovery for the green carts. The current and proposed rates are as follows. For carts three and four, it's currently at $10 each. The proposed rate is to those, $11 each. Carts five and above are currently at $15 each, and the proposed new rate is $18 each. In accordance with Proposition 218 process, we made the following findings in sections A through C. Regarding the, assuming that there's a, the static number of carts stays the same, the increase in revenue is only $2,725 per month. And also as regarding the only other requirement or suggested changes, the, what was communicated earlier about the adding the three yard, the four yards, six yards, and the eight yard bins. With that being said, just would like to turn this over to the council and to the mayor in opening the public hearing.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Any questions from the public? So anybody from the public, any questions? Please, stand up in my. Comments? Apologize, comments?
My name is Alex Cross, number 286 Parkway. I've lived for 38 years, newcomer to Atherton. And I received through the mayor, as most of you did, this information on the proposal to raise the rates for green waste tons. And I would like to ask whoever is representing waste management in this proposal, what are the principles on which you base your pricing? Is it based on the volume of waste that's moved, the number of tons? Could you tell us that, or else there's absolutely nothing here which justifies the price increase? No statements?
Yeah, I apologize. This portion is for your comments, and unfortunately, the questions are, you know, you can state your questions, or if you have a question related to something, but we cannot answer at this particular point. This is really a comment section, but we would be interested in providing you that information at some other point. So.
All right, I'll retire. If I just make one point.
Please.
When I read this, I noted that all the changes were increases. And I have to ask whether waste management proposes to give reduced prices if you put less tons out, or will you always get the same quarterly bill, whether you put out four, or three, or two? I think we pay from our household, for example, for three tons. The last six weeks, we put out one. Will we get a reduction in the next invoice that we receive? And will all the other people in the audience also have that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. What I can do is give you an opportunity to say it once. So any other comments from the public? Seeing no more comments from the public, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Councilman Whitmer, please.
So that was a very, a very good question, and a question that I had to go back to recology on as well. They do inventories on a periodic basis, and they count the number of, every time they push the button to empty a green bucket, they do a count. And their comment to me was that if you have, you can have like five, or whatever, whatever the number is, you have three. And some weeks you don't put the second, the third one out, then you should not be charged for that third one for that, for that period of time. So people, I know some people, they have five, for example, and every other week they put five out, and every, but they're only counted in the main inventory of having four, because they do one week of four and one week of five. So you are allowed to dial up and down. If for an extended period of time, you don't want to ever, you don't want to put three out at all, you're just going to go with two, which are included in your rate, you just tell recology, "I'm not doing that. I'm not putting it out." And so they don't charge you the extra. And so we're happy to, I'm happy to work with you. You can, you know, contact me via email, or give me a call, and I'm more than happy to get you in touch with the right people. But, but they shouldn't be charging you if you just put it out once, once in a while. So the rate increase, which is only for the green carts, nothing else, nothing else is going up, but that rate increase should not really affect you, given the circumstances as you just explained. This is for, there are a number of people that have 20 some odd green carts. And the picking up and disposal of those green carts, as Robert did an excellent job in describing, is $19 a barrel. And so when we're only charging 10 or even $18, that means those who us, those of us here that don't have anything more than one or two carts, we're paying for our neighbors, people with 20 and 30 barrels, to, to empty their green waste and cart it away. And so that's, we're in the process of trying to get to more of a cost basis. And the green carts do add to our fees and drive our rates up annually. So, so that's why, one of the reasons is, we're raising the rates to try and maybe serve as a deterrent to some of the people that are, I won't say abusing the system, but that we're subsidizing an awful lot.
Thank you, Walter. Any other comments from councilmembers?
I'll make a comment. I, I think that it's important, as we go forward, to attempt to address the actual cost of managing the green waste. And for residents that have more carts, I, I think it's appropriate that we move it closer to the actual cost. I, I do think there's value in deterrent, like Bill said, to reducing the higher number of carts in order to reduce the cost, because if you need less garbage trucks to come by and pick up, because people are having less green waste, then the cost will be reduced. So I, I think it's appropriate for us to move toward getting exact cost. So I think it's appropriate for us to move toward getting exact cost recovery, and there won't be a proposal for more than cost recovery.
Councilmember Woodmore?
I'm good. We talked about this.
Yeah, this is the, this is the second time we've seen this, and, you know, trash rates are something that Councilmember Whitmer and I both are involved in, and as you can probably guess, it sounds, Councilmember Whitmer's deep end to the trash. So with that being said, the goal on our part as a town is to try to stabilize, make sure our rates are consistent, and to try to have a true cost recovery. And we watch them, and we watch them. So we are as concerned as you are, and it's, it's really to our attention in bringing forth disordinance and adjusting the rates, as we've discussed, with a goal of truth, just trying to make sure that it's fair to everyone. So that being said, do we have a motion from the table to approve this? This would be a second reading?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rates. I'd also like to have a suggestion that our committee get together and review the inequities on the commercial rates in the next couple of weeks as well.
I'd second that.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, all of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none? That would be a four in favor. Thank you very much. So let's go on to item number 18. The introduction of an ordinance, city, city council in the town of Atherton, adding a new chapter, 12.13.